Now to Board of Law, the regular be Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six fifty P. M. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
Alderman Decker.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Present.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll get everybody to stand for President Lindis, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
That moves us to item four, public and citizens' house state. Did I have had any of email or anything like that? Has anyone else had anything like that? Okay, open to the floor.
Just a couple of things. Without reading through all those things about this slaker, is that a, is it being replaced? Okay, how am I trying to say this? Are we paying to replace it, or is it being covered by warranty?
It's part of the overall system that was being put in under the bond and the money that we took in.
Right.
It has never failed to perform, the original piece of equipment.
Right.
We now have taken bids.
It failed to perform. You said it never failed to perform.
I knew what you meant.
It failed to perform. It's never been commissioned. It's never been commissioned, never ran.
So they're covered by warranty?
And so, we've been, it's not at a morrie stage. We've been given the ability to go ahead and get bids to replace that slaker with a different brand and to get three bids.
But at our expense?
No, no, no. Out of the budgeted money for the systems that the taxpayers were expecting to get it from, so we're not paying double for it.
Okay, just one check.
Yeah.
The other thing, you're getting ready to look at utility payments and write-offs. There's one on there that owns a commercial building in this town. He has offices here in this town, and he owns probably ten to fifteen different rental properties in this town, and I don't think it needs to be written off. I mean, I can say it, but I don't want to.
Please don't just for a second, because there shouldn't be any names, so just don't for a second.
No, okay.
Where's the names for on the PDF on Lexa?
Yeah, the names have always.
Yeah, they've always been.
Two thousand and four.
I know. We need to correct that moving forward. So if there's going to change in the law, so we'll need to change that moving forward.
What will the law change?
So when they updated the sunshine law, I want to say, you know, James, I'll get to the exec, I think it was twenty twenty, maybe twenty twenty-one, so there was an addition added to the sunshine law about what is considered an open record for utility records, and part of the thing that was subsequently closed or could be closed was the name of the utility customer for purposes of basically safety purposes. So cities could still release the name if they choose to, but I think it's something that at one point in time, when we brought it to the attention of the council, we got a change as part of the sunshine law. I know we had discussed it, so there's not a violation of law for actually having the name released, but I know at one point in time we discussed whether or not we wanted to continue to release names, so.
Well, it's on there.
There's no violation to it.
No, it is not. It is not a violation.
It's only a violation to withhold.
Correct, absolutely. And that's exactly what I think I just said. There was no law violation committed hereby publishing the names of the council. I discussed about previously closing those records, or closing the names.
Too little, remember?
We need to follow up to see what we decided, and if.
If we've made any changes. I don't remember if we did or not.
We need to find out.
I just need to discuss.
Anyway, that's my two comments and questions.
All right, thank you for your comments. That being said, move to item five, Water and West Report. And it's in your packet, okay, the plan. Really, the overview of it is what we know where that's at. It has to do with slaker and the ongoing situation of us getting bids now. We have three bids that have been turned over to the DNR at this point to look at and to accept our recognition or not of the three. Well, it's a completely different system.
One of those was huge based on the picture.
Right, yeah.
It fit in that space.
Right, and it's a completely different process, so personnel we have, we're totally in the process, it'd be a whole lot of things with that one. So it kind of, and the other two are pretty close. One of those is the original piece of equipment we had that ran for twenty-five years until we changed that system for twenty-three years, whatever it was, so that's been, you know, deciphered with DNR what they're allowed to do, but we're in the process of ordering and getting them ordered.
Well, I mean, we need it. There's no doubt about it.
Oh, no question. But it's still been a year. It's, I think, after forty-six weeks now, delivery after approved drawings. So we're a bit of a year, unfortunately. And actually, if we can speed that up, if we can get any help if you're able to do that. We do understand that the challenge that is for all of us, the city as well as the residents of Centray, I'm one of them too, it's challenging. Our water is absolutely safe, drinking water, well above the metal by the Safe Drinking Water Act, so we're good there. We still have softened water at all now, which creates big problems for us in the valves and things in our homes as well, so we get that. And it's on our mind, and we're trying to speed up as quick as possible. We're really pushing this pretty hard, so that's kind of where we're at on the water treatment plant itself.
Did they ever figure out why the slaker that was in there didn't work?
No.
Was it a new process or something?
No. Then our kid figured it out. So we have, we have a procedure that's going to go on in May, beginning of May, remediation, and to be transparent, that's what's going on there with those folks that provided that unit that failed to ever work or recommissioned, and we'll go from there on that. That moves us now to the wastewater treatment plant. The Water and West, it's in there, it's in the packet. Today, we had two, we have two bidders at this point on taking over for Fisher to finish the punch list of items that needed to be done. Looking to get a third person or company to give us our third bid. Blake was going to reach out to somebody, and he was going to reach out to DNR after we got done talking and meeting out there, you know, the meeting before that I missed. But sounds like in the review of the two people that did come to look at it, it was pretty straightforward what needed to be done. I think people always hate to take over a project for somebody else and fix it and get it finished, but it seemed like they were both very highly interested in doing that, so that was a good meeting out there, with no red flags that came up from the discussions that they had, if they'd walked aside, looked everything over, it looked like at this point. Looking to get the third person to bid and get that work done. We did have a meeting and talked to the DNR here a week or so ago. In that meeting, we'd had a couple before, like I mentioned before in the past. In those couple of meetings, it was to just tell them, to talk with them about the challenges we were having up here with the system, the legal challenges that we were having with the provider, and they were very glad to be working with us. We're glad we talked to them in the past, and they're transparent, but, you know, when it gets to be legal stuff, they back out of it naturally. They've told us that all along, but I believe at this point they understand our situation, they understand that we need to do this sooner than later. The lady that we worked with, with the DNR, she said that she felt that August, you know, that they would be more than open to proposing an extension for us as DB. We need this done way before then, I explained we did, because we need to get wire into basins, so we seal the basins. So that's kind of an update, a pause going on there, just from what we talked about today. So any questions? Any thoughts from anybody? Kind of what is you got? Did I sum that up pretty well?
You did.
Okay.
Are there any concerns with the change orders or pay applications that they're asking for?
No, the ones we talked about today, one's going to be a ninety-one hundred dollar deduct on the water side of things. And so what's going to, the pay, the pay, we talked about those today. He said he'd be glad to answer any of those questions, but they're all within what the expectations were of coming work through, that's done. And so he said there was nothing, no anomalies, nothing that was putting us out of spec on where we need to be in the bid process or the budget process of what it did bid. So all of that's symmetrically okay compared to what the bid was. So if there's no more questions about that, nothing to be said. Sure, absolutely, answer his question, sure.
Just so that, you know, we can kind of clarify about the publication of names on the utilities, James. So Senate Bill seven forty-five became effective on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, so it's a recent change to the sunshine law. It allows cities to close the records of those utilities, you know, wherever you publish the names and the identifiable information. I took a quick glance through our city code to see if we had actually taken an action or, you know, through ordinance to codify that. Based on our published code that's online, I didn't see that the city has actually taken action, so at this time, those, that information can still be made public. If the board wanted to in the future, it could choose to close that information, but based on what I saw on our ordinance, we have not, so I just wanted to make sure that there's all the information earlier, but I clarified it to us when it went into action, so I just thought about that.
Well, thank you for that update. Appreciate that. That moves to item six, consent agenda. A is the more vulnerable meeting minutes, B is the public works and killers committee meeting minutes, C is the general government public safety committee meeting minutes, D is the collector's report, E is the treasurer's report, F is the activities report, and G is the financials report. I entertain a motion to accept all. Move accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a first and a second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Okay, that moves us back down to accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a total of, for a total of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, nineteen dollars and
What year are the new cars, I guess, Missouri State Highway Patrol?
Well, didn't he say they were twenty-twenty's?
I do not remember.
I think that's, I think that's what he told us, were they twenty-twenty's?
I don't remember, but he said they were fairly.
They have fifty or sixty thousand miles on each of them, and because of how Highway Patrol takes care of their vehicles, we actually, the hundred thousand mile warranty will be transferred to us with those vehicles.
I'm pretty sure I can find that for you for sure. I'm ninety percent sure that they were twenty-twenty's. If I remember correctly, there's two of them. I'll find that for you.
Is that the last payment for Martin? Martin, we got more.
They're still doing work on the wastewater side, so as the pumps and everything come in, they.
Is it half done, you think, or?
I think we're more than half done. We're waiting on the main pump for one of the pump houses, and then the electric, the electric is what is definitely holding us up.
So they're moving pretty quick if we're, because we just pay the trunk here.
As materials, as materials come in, yes, they're getting done.
The payment that's happening, okay.
Yes, yep, as it comes in, it's just, it's the rate of the material at this point. I believe the last pump is expected to get here sometime in May.
Yeah, Water and West keep a close eye on payments, dispersals and things like that, making sure that they're all worked done, and this one here is for pay number eleven and pay for line out of six.
Move that we accept the accounts payable over one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a grand total of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand and nineteen dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, nineteen dollars and fifty cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you. That moves us to the action agenda. One is A, further finances, unpaid utility bills, two thousand and twenty-two, December two thousand and twenty-two.
Do you want to, without mentioning names?
I'm not mentioning names.
Without mentioning names, no, I just be respectful, so how does that situation work if somebody's on here, but yet they have other properties? Is it limited to the property, or is it to the individual?
No, I believe that that should have been.
Yeah.
We can add that to their commercial bill.
Yep. On the sidebar, we have this menu up, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. Yes, request, because I think we'd all be asking a question right now, I mean, what we.
Yeah.
About, about that.
Move that we, so we'll need a motion to write these off as amended based on that one? Is that what we're looking for?
You should probably list the address that you're removing from the unpaid collection account.
Account number.
Or the account number. Who could like do some of that file waste.
Have you got it?
Which account number is?
You got it, third column.
Four digit.
Oh, I know, but which account number is the one?
I'm not sure which one it is.
I'm not either. I haven't written it down.
Is there another paper one I can look at?
I was going to say, I marked it on Landon's copy.
Lucy, your copy, please. Thank you. I asked me account number fifty-one, fifty-two.
So I'm accepting motion, accepting the write-off, accepting account number fifty-one, fifty-two.
And make the motion that we approve the write-offs as listed, except for account number five-one, five-two.
Second, a first and a second to unpaid utility bills write-off, except for five-one, five-two, the count. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Centray wastewater treatment plant reimbursement form number ten, a motion to accept that.
So the first one is.
What is this again? This is something people can apply for and get, is that what this is?
So the water treatment, so number ten, this is the water treatment plant reimbursement request that's going to, I believe it's mostly to do with Bartlett's costs and that they work so far while they've been getting the slaker bids and the work that they've been doing on the water treatment plant.
And this is for like C, CNS company?
CNS will be for the wastewater side, so that's going to be for this, for the next one.
Yeah. All we need to, all we need is a motion. I make a motion, we accept the Centray WSTP reimbursement form number ten.
Second, I have a first, second, to approve the Centray wastewater treatment plant reimbursement form number ten. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yes, okay. Moves us to six, Centray wastewater reimbursement question number thirteen, label number twelve for, that's number twelve for DNR.
Is this for Bartlett and West?
So this one will be nine thousand dollars of it is for Bartlett and West, and then fifty-five thousand of it is to Schmidt Irrigation, and then seventy-five, almost seventy-six thousand dollars is for CNS.
I can scroll down far up somewhere.
You're right.
They submitted all this, correct?
Correct, yep, and Bartlett goes through it all to make sure that it was, that it's accurate, and then they submit it.
It's worth it for them, and they're at that, at that level of work.
We keep them track, and I know you are.
I make the motion, we approve Centray wastewater reimbursement request number thirteen.
Second, a first, second to approve Centray wastewater reimbursement question number thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. We got under legal, A is amend section two dash eighteen of the ordinance, we'll build on what that be.
Two-five-zero-seven.
Two-five-zero-seven, do you want?
So what this one is doing is adding, so right now, the city bonds the treasurer for fifteen thousand dollars a year, basically for air and emissions and protecting work that the city treasurer does. When Marilyn became the city, the finance clerk, we did do a twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollar bond for her for touching the financials, but as city clerk, there's no requirement for her to be bonded in our ordinances currently. So what this does is it adds the requirement for us to bond the city clerk.
So I'll accept a motion for bill number two-five-zero-seven to be given its first reading by title only.
Move that bill number two-five-zero-seven be given its first reading by title only?
Second. I have a first and a second to bill number two-five-zero-seven be given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
An ordinance amending Centray city code, section two dash eighteen, election duties of city clerk generally. I move that we give bill number, oh, yeah, I'm tongue-tied off.
I screwed everybody up for the reason.
I move that bill number two-five-zero-seven be given its second reading by title only.
Second, a first and a second, bill number two-five-zero-seven be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, second reading, please.
An ordinance amending Centray city code, section two dash eighteen, election duties of city clerk generally. I move that bill number two-five-zero-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Okay, a first and a second that amendment, amending section two point eight, that ordinance of bill number two-five-zero-seven be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cox.
Aye.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Alderman Decker.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah. Ordinance number, bill number two-five-zero-seven, passes.
Ordinance three-one-six-six.
Thank you. That moves us to B, legal RV parking ordinance. Bill number two-five-zero-eight.
I move that bill number two-five-zero-eight be given its.
I'm not sure this is worded right yet. Except the suggestion I put, I'm not sure this is worded right. If you go down here to B, where it says like a no water parking, third time's old and seven yards, except that a vehicle may be left standing or parked without time limit in whole or in part on a public street right-of-way if the following conditions are met, and that is, the vehicle is standing or parked as near to the private property line adjoining the public street right-of-way as practicable, that it can be parked on the street right-of-way. Am I reading this wrong?
Were you on B again?
Yeah, yeah, you got to go down after you go to the seventy-two hours, and then seventy-two hours, then say, except that a vehicle may be left standing or parked without time limit in whole or in part on a public street right-of-way if the following conditions are met. So that's just said, the seventy-two hours, there's an exception here, and there's no time limit if any of these conditions are met, and number one is the vehicle is standing or parked as near to the private property line adjoining the public street right-of-way, right-of-way line as practicable. I'm thinking that's saying it can be parked on a public street without time.
Well, are they talking about, like, if you were your private residence here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as you're not obstructing, like, a fire hydrant or something like that, but yeah, you could be able, you should be able to leave a car parked.
Without time limit, on a public street? Not a car, this is an RV.
I feel like it's.
No, an RV?
Well, this is really any vehicle, if I'm reading that right.
That would be right.
Certainly not reading this wrong.
I mean, your city terms may be open and honest, and when I looked at the amendment, the other piece has been sitting in the city code for, I'm not even for sure how long, so I just looked at the changes that were being proposed. I don't want to opine, honestly, let's just set this one aside if you want to, I don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction on this, I'd rather have time to look at it to make sure that everything's in harmony, and if this is not an emergency situation to pass, it's just table it and make it the next one.
Yeah, let's get it done.
I mean, I'll bring it, just make sure that it's harmonizing correctly, that I see what you, I do see what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but since those parts weren't being changed, I didn't specifically look at it, it just, it'd be adding to the sidewalk easement, so I'll take a look at it more closely.
Okay, well, it appeared to come in.
I mean, I actually don't disagree in the quick reading, but I'd like to take a look just to make sure, provide it, offer some additional changes.
Let's just take, so make a motion, table bill number two-five-zero. No, I don't, it's not due yet. I make a motion, we table bill number. Not bill.
Don't use the bill number.
Yeah, don't use the bill numbers.
So you make a motion.
You make a motion for B, legal RV parking ordinance to be tabled. Okay, I make a motion that item B, legal RV parking ordinance to be tabled.
Second.
A first and a second to item B, under legal, of RV parking ordinance to be tabled. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, table that one. That moves us to, so two-five-zero-eight would be chapter twenty-two personnel, right? You see that? Twenty-five-zero-seven is the first one, we skipped one.
Twenty-five-zero-eight would be D, chamber contract?
What about C, changes to chapter twenty-two personnel?
That would be two-five-zero-eight, right?
Yes.
Is that just a motion, or is that a bill?
It's a bill, remember? Bill number one, the ordinance, it's an ordinance. So I have C, changes to chapter twenty-two personnel. Bill number twenty-five-zero-eight, I would take a, any discussion about it.
Is there any discussion?
Basically, this is the ordinance that was passed at the last meeting. At that time, I was not aware that a twelve noon to midnight car had been added to the schedule, so it wasn't included in this. So I talked to Harland, this shift is basically for relief. For example, this past week, they've been working on search warrants, and it leaves one person, if they have to drive a different time to get a signature from the judge and get in front of the judge, it leaves one person to respond to calls. So that the new car isn't always going to be filled, but it is on the schedule, so they're asking that between the hours of six P. M. and midnight, that that shift receive a shift differential, so six hours of the twelfth would receive shift differential. And that's the only change that was made to the, to the ordinance.
I move that bill number two-five-zero-eight be given its first reading by title only.
Second, a first and a second to bill number two-five-zero-eight be given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Passes, first reading, please.
Bill number two-five-zero-eight, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of the Centray city code concerning employees. I move that bill number two-five-zero-eight be given its second reading by title only.
Second, a first and a second to bill number two-five-zero-eight be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. First reading, please.
I move that bill number two-five-zero-eight be adopted. Bill, move that Bill number two-five-zero-eight be adopted by roll.
You gotta read it.
Move that Bill number two-five-zero-eight be given its second reading by title only.
Read.
I did the first, I didn't do the second.
No, you did the second.
Read. Just gotta read the title.
Oh, and an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of the Centraria City Code concerning employees. Move that Bill number two-five-zero-eight be adopted by roll call vote.
Okay, now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-zero-eight be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, roll call vote please, Marilyn.
Alderman Cox? Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Decker?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah. Bill number two-five-zero-eight passes, ordinance number three-one-six-seven?
Yes.
This is D legal, you wanna talk about this?
Sure. So you guys are gonna find in your packet, first and foremost, you'll have an ordinance in your packet requesting to repeal ordinance number thirty-one sixty-three concerning the contract with the chamber here locally. So it was brought to the attention of the city, a section of statute seventy-nine, one-thirty-zero. So in that section of statute, it applies to fourth-class cities, of which the city of Centraria is. However, if you take a look at the statute on its face, at the bottom of the reviser's footnote, it clearly states that this section of statute was declared unconstitutional. So the reviser's note points out that that section of statute is, it's unconstitutional. So it was declared unconstitutional in Calzone versus Coster et al. in two thousand and sixteen. Subsequently, however, there's a small wrinkle, the city of Centraria still has on its ordinance books identical language in its ordinance that mirrors seventy-nine, one-three-zero. So the question becomes, when you've got a statute that is declared unconstitutional, which means it cannot be enforced, it violates the Constitution of the state of Missouri and/or the Constitution of the United States, what happens when you have an ordinance that also bears the same language? Well, it follows that your ordinance would also, in like fashion, be considered unconstitutional or invalid. Now, cities can pass ordinances that are more strict than state law, so that is something that's permissible, so long as, again, it does not violate some provision of the Constitution. So in this case, though, while it currently stands, you know, both are considered unconstitutional, so what does that mean, what does it take to pass an ordinance in the state of Missouri? It means that you have to have a quorum of the board present, and the majority of that quorum present to vote. So in the legal opinion that I expressed to the city, when it passed the ordinance to a three-to-one vote, that was a majority of those present that constituted a quorum of this board were allowed to pass that ordinance validly. However, the city of Centraria historically has not passed an ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign contracts, except in defined circumstances, which are specifically set forward in statute. So instead of this being like, what's called a general bill, those are specific instances, and they are allowed by the Constitution, and they are allowed by statute. But passing an ordinance in order to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Chamber of Commerce is not one of those specific special exceptions where you need a two-thirds, or a basically a majority of those elected to the board. So we have always traditionally done this by resolution, and in the past, prior to me becoming your city attorney, you didn't even take it to the board at all. Your mayor just simply signed your contracts. However, at the time, and this board, I think, very astutely and smartly, decided that there needed to be more transparency to the citizens about what contracts the city was entering into. So we moved to having it put in this Board of Aldermen meeting that the mayor would be authorized to sign contracts. However, we've always done it by resolution, we haven't done it by ordinance. So it was my suggestion to keep with our standard practice that instead of having an ordinance on the books, which is considered a permanent record or a permanent law of the city, is that we repeal the prior ordinance, because this isn't a permanent law, this contract has an expiration. That we instead authorize the mayor by resolution, the more proper route, to allow him to sign the contract with the city chamber. So do you remember, Ward number seven, any questions about what I just said? I know that seems like a lot, but I wanted to make sure you understand why we're doing what we're doing, and also just.
We're repealing the old one.
You're gonna repeal it, this, this before you would be an ordinance requesting me to repeal the prior ordinance. You'll understand in the packet that there is a resolution that would be read one time, authorizing the mayor to sign the identical same contract, except in resolution form, not in ordinance form.
It is that the other, the ordinance on the books is same, same language as the one in the rule unconstitutional.
Yeah, so we, we don't have before us right now, you know, we don't have before us actually the, the repealing of the actual section of the ordinance that has the language, right now, I mean, it's, you literally default, I mean, if that's unconstitutional, and you still follow what is considered the law, which is the majority of those present that constitute the quorum can pass an ordinance. But my suggestion is, in this case, is that you don't need a permanent ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a temporary contract, it really needs to be done by resolution.
Do we do this every year?
Yeah.
We should.
You, you should, you should do, at least, I don't know how, is the term.
Whatever it is.
This time it is, yes.
Some has, it's been three years. Right, but you just don't, I mean.
But when it comes for renewal, it comes to resolution again.
Yes, authorizing the mayor to sign and to go through the same process. But again, your ordinance has become permanent laws on your books, and these are not the type of things you want as permanent laws on your books, because it's a temporary contract.
On this, nothing on that, but on the contract itself, I've had some discussions with a few people, and even, I'm a hundred percent for this, I believe in the chamber. As for the contract, I think we can leave the same here, but can we, this is what I'd like to see done. They're asking for, we give them half, and then six months later, give them the other half. That way, they're obligated to, 'cause I think in the past, we just give them money, and then we forget about it, everybody forgets about it, and I don't think anything really happens. They've got a whole new core of people, very energetic people, but we'll, we will make changes in the contract too, I think, in the six months, we, I don't think anybody's ever looked at the previous contracts, we didn't even do this. So that would give us an opportunity, six months from now, okay, you're looking fine, we wanna make this change, this change, and then here's the rest of the money for this fiscal year, is that possible? Rather than just giving them the full amount here, we have fun, you know, that's.
So it, it was agreed upon that they would, they're going to do the audit of the financial records, and they're supposed to get that to us, they are also, they have.
Well, in six months, we're gonna know if all that happens, and then here you go, but what if, what if, six months from now, they all? Well, I know they won't, they're very good people, but we just, we.
Yeah, the agreement was that, you know, certain points is, is going to be made by the point of the six months, that they're coming to the meetings every month, giving us reports on what's going on, and they know that.
We can make those changes after we, after we pass that, correct? I mean, we're not obligated to say, here, we promised you twenty thousand dollars, so take it, no, we can.
To answer your question, Alderman Magley, Alderman Rogers, sorry, the contract, I think, is a lump sum payment right now upfront. I don't recall seeing milestone payments, like you're describing, that they have to meet certain requirements before certain sums of money are, are paid out. You can structure the contract that way, if the board would like to, but I do not believe that is currently the way your contract is.
I don't think so either, that's kind of a word.
I thought it was split into two payments, is what I remember.
He was, he was more, I think we were talking about.
Although it's a two payment, although it's a six month thing.
Yeah.
You think?
I think it was an immediate.
I don't know.
But there weren't milestones, we felt we would evaluate the milestones before we would sign another one, and that's why we only live with one year, 'cause at the time when we were discussing this, they still had to find a candidate for the director, they still had to get the person going, it's gonna take them a couple of months to get started, in all reality, you get a new person in a job, it's three to six months before they're actually doing their job, after training and everything's going on. So, I mean, six month, here's a list of milestones, it is really hard. One year, here's that list of milestones, or we're not going to renew the contract, is much more reasonable. Especially when we originally talked about this a month or so ago, they didn't have a director, and then they hired Sam, and then that happened pretty quick, once we said we were gonna do this. But I thought the payment was two payments.
I, we talked about it, did we do it? I, I.
Don't look at it. To me, this is, we're providing twenty thousand, it doesn't say we're gonna pay that much.
Well, you could read, I don't think they would say anything, but they could, I think it's, the way it's worded, they got the money back right here.
I mean, I remember looking at the contract in terms of, you know, like, is it legally standing, but in terms of, like, evaluating, finding one of the payments structured or anything like that, I wasn't.
There was not, no criteria set to earn the money.
Yeah.
There was no criteria set to, there were discussions about it, and expectations set, where they, they wouldn't, wouldn't give the money. Again, re-upped. See, your contract, because I can guarantee you, I hire a regional manager that's done whatever I've done in my territory for my product, he's not, he or she's not worth it much to me for three months.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, they drained me for about half that time, about to spend it in the best, to make sure they understood how, where the bathrooms are in the building, where to get from point A to point B, and what resources are that they need to do their job. So, in, in this situation here, we looked at it, and I think what we were thinking was, you get somebody hired, you got a year contract, but at the same time, you can't, you should start to see results, without question, going into the, the end of the first, the second quarter of the season.
You should, yes.
No question, and that should get even better, by the end of the year, the last four months of the year, that should be meaning every, every deliverable that they put in their plan, which they did provide us a plan. Correct?
Yeah, they did.
And so, look, here's the deal for this thing, it's either gonna work or it's not, right? Or it's gonna work, and it need, need.
It better work, it should work.
Needs, well, we, we don't have the money, it's just simple, we don't have the money for a head cap to put somebody as an economic developer for the city of Centraria.
Exactly.
So if we could get for the extra amount of money and investment, it's worth seed money to see if we get, and speculate if we're gonna get the money, get, give or return investment. And I don't like to speculate blindly, but it only makes sense to me, if you have somebody doing the job, they add, you end up with more booths, a couple more events, you have more traffic through town, you have more sales tax. That's, that's gonna start to pay back that money. Now, we absolutely could take, and I have no problem being one of those that takes a look at their business plan, and compares that business plan nine months into this thing, and say, you know, going into the new year, we're not, we're not really enamored to, to do this, because this, this, and this, and black and white, and what's fair.
After, after giving them the full amount for the next year.
Well, I think you're tied to it, I, I don't, I don't have a problem paying it ten thousand, ten thousand, if we wanted to adopt the resolution saying to enter into a contract stay, you will pay ten thousand, and then ten thousand in six months.
But if, we, we go to this end of day, and terrorists say, this is what we wanna do, no problem, is that gonna affect anything, or if they say?
I don't know about what, I don't know if they turn down ten thousand dollars, they only spend all twenty upfront.
Yeah, they, they knew that, in fact, we've already written, I believe that, that check went out on the tenth.
For twenty?
For ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars, worth of.
That's what we agreed on.
I thought it's what we agreed to, but it's not showing.
I don't know.
But, but it needs to state that, I think.
Well, the ordinance is just authorizing you to sign a contract for twenty thousand dollars for the year, the payment terms are on the contract, not the ordinance.
Right, so we can negotiate that.
We can negotiate that.
Yeah, it's already done.
Well, I haven't signed a contract yet.
Ask for forgiveness?
Haven't?
I just thought about that.
I haven't.
So you haven't signed a contract, but they have their first payment?
I don't know.
It's what she just said.
It was voted on and passed, I have not gotten the paper to Chris to sign it.
I mean, I'm a hundred percent for it, I mean, with the chamber, but if we're gonna do resol, it's gotta be legit.
Well, absolutely, it's gotta be legit, I mean.
In the past, I mean, we just kinda, it happened.
I, I don't donate my time to be mayor of Centraria.
'Cause I know some of us questioned pretty hard what we were getting for our money over the previous years. We're willing to go with the, with the new leadership, with everything that's going on, with what the, the new energy, let me put it that way, the new energy associated with it. Here, here's our investment to see if it's gonna pay off or not. On that, I'll say, I make a motion, that Bill number two-five-zero-nine be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-zero-nine be given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, first reading please.
An ordinance to repeal ordinance three-one-six-three concerning the contract with the Centraria Chamber of Commerce for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. I move that, move that Bill number two-five-zero-nine be given its second reading by title only.
Okay. Now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-zero-nine be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes.
An ordinance to repeal ordinance three-one-six-three concerning the contract with Centraria Chamber of Commerce for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. I move that Bill number two-five-zero-nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Okay. Now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-zero-nine be given its, be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, roll call vote please, Marilyn.
Alderman Cox?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Decker?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah. Okay, good. Get us in accordance with what you were telling us about, so, good. E, Bill number, yeah, it'd be Bill number two-five-one-oh, it's resolution, I would ask for a first reading of Bill number two-five-one-zero, which was first and only reading, resolution. I move that Bill number two-five-one-zero be given its first and only reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-one-zero be given its first and only reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes, first and only reading please. Resolution, yeah, do I have to do a roll call? A resolution authorizing directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centraria, Missouri to execute a contract with the Centraria area Chamber of Commerce to reform economic development and promotion services for the city of Centraria, Missouri. I move that Bill number two-five-one-zero be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, the first and second, that Bill number two-five-one-zero be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, roll call vote please, Marilyn.
Alderman Cox?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Decker?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah. Resolution number, roll call vote.
On R dash two-three dash zero-four.
Thank you. That moves us to F, legal, it's a resolution, Bill number two-five-one-one, it is July fourth fireworks, twenty twenty-three. I move that Bill number two-five-one-one be given its first and only reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-one-one be given its first and only reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, first reading please, first and only reading please. A resolution issuing a permit to the city of Centraria, Missouri to conduct a special fireworks display at City Recreation Park. I move that Bill number two-five-one-one be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, first and second, that Bill number two-five-one-one be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes, roll call vote please.
Alderman Cox?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Decker?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah. Well, it passes, thank you. It moves us to purchasing here at Centraria, justification for slaker purchase. You talking more about that, that's, give us the motion to be able to ahead and purchase a slaker based upon the bids and the DNR approval.
Yep, so this was the, what Bartlet West has recommended that we go with, based off of the three quotes that we received, and if the board agrees that we wanna proceed out with that, then if you make the motion to approve for the mayor to sign this letter to go to DNR, so we can move forward with the, the purchase of the new slaker.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the letter to Lauren Russell of the DNR, for second.
Second.
Now, first and second, the suicide justification for the slaker signing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, thank you. Old business, don't really have any old business, I'll throw in on some old business or new business, just give you an update. We have three people that went and are in the process of being certified to be pyro technically trained to shoot fireworks for us in the city. to shoot firework for us in the city. So we'll have three people, which is good, something you need. I think there was a lot of learning going on in that and I'll give an update at our next month meeting, so. Any new business? All right. Mayor, under recognition, proclamations for National Public Safety Department cases week, which has been this week, I'm going individually versus leaving here, proclamations here all the weeks of, is what I'm doing with those, so that one's been done. My appreciation week is going to be done tomorrow or Wednesday. Do we find everyone to be together?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So tomorrow, we'll be doing that one. I think the following week is C National Library Week. I'll be going there to read the proclamation to them in person. We'll be keeping you in the loop on that as we talked about earlier on that. D is National Park Week. I'll be going and doing that, that week as well. I don't know if you've run the G L B, they're all separate, aren't they, that all these areas?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll be done, be done on a weekly basis and I'll be doing those in person versus treating them all here when nobody's here, kind of in the departments and where it's at. Does she know that? That's all I've got on that. Register twelve, city administrator?
Um, March was, was a busy month. Worked a lot on finishing the budget. I also put in, the big item on here is the seven applications that turned into Boone County for the, for the additional ARCA funds and that amount of one point seven million dollars approximately. So hopefully we will see some return on, on those applications. Just really a lot of, a lot of meetings and working on budget in March.
You said June will do.
End of June, I believe, this, yeah, before they put it out, yep. I did meet with the park quite a bit in March to go over their budget and work on theirs. I attended two of their meetings.
Any questions?
If there's any questions over anything I haven't seen, anyone?
You might mention to them the, the downtown workshop.
Uh, so there's a, um, I lost my words here. Missouri Main Street Connection is something that we can participate in. I've gotten invitations in the past, but they've got their annual meeting coming up at the end of July. It's gonna be in St. Louis. Lots of good information and education really to kinda, the whole thought process behind it, revitalizing downtown districts and near Main Street areas. So I had emailed the mayor today to ask if that would be something that I would be able to go and participate in just to kinda, because I, I would like to see, I, I would like to be an active participant in helping to revitalize our downtown district. Our chamber is doing a really good job. Some of our businesses are jumping in there and doing a fantastic job getting more people to come to town to shop and enjoy Centroyia and I, I would like to be a part of that also. So I would like to attend this conference. There, there is.
Three, gotta be about seven hundred dollars. Three, something for the players and two.
It's a three day conference.
So.
In St. Louis.
Chris, can I make a comment? Um, a lot of times the main street, whatever you was just talking about, is detrimental to your chamber because they can't hardly work in a small town like this together because they both want memberships and additions from what I've read in the past.
So that they would not work hand in hand?
In almost every instance where a main street organization has taken, uh, come in place, the chamber has gone out of business. It, it's usually it's one or the other that works in a small town, not both. Problem with main street is that you've got businesses outside of the downtown area. The main street is about the downtown area.
I mean, I just wanted to point that out.
Might still be a good learning.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that we.
That, that's not to say that you shouldn't go because you could pick up pointers.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, sometimes people's change, thinking changes, cooperation changes, sometimes maybe not, right? But you can find that for sure yourself.
Right.
Like the first one meeting time I went to NML, I just wanted to see what it was all about. Was it a waste of time? Was it good? I thought it's, it's a great meeting, I think, when you have. So bottom line is I think it's worth going to this time and getting the feedback and let her report back to us what she found out. That's some good ideas to know, to, to investigate while you're there, how that works. Where you work collaboratively, you know, with, with the Chamber of Commerce and how does that go? Are you in odds sometimes with that or how do you work around that? There's a lot of questions you could ask to find out, right? So I mean, a good learning experience.
What about inviting the chamber?
I said that today about maybe one of the chamber folks who too. So we talked about this. So receivers mentioned two of them. So it's a good idea. But they could feel about, they could feel for two as well, right, is it, you know?
If it's a learning, if there's things that can be learned that will help the overall, the city overall, I mean.
Yeah, they might have really good ideas. You just don't necessarily wanna join it.
Right.
You know, because I think Fayette has the main street and they have nothing else.
Yeah, their chamber went out of business after they formed a base. Because people weren't gonna join both. And when all the downtown businesses joined the main street organization, one neighbor left to run the chamber. But you could pick up some ideas from going to this thing.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right.
So anyway, just wanna make everybody aware of this. I think it's about the last week is a virus, right?
Yep.
Anything else? That moves us to our streets attorney, she'll be nice.
So you heard, we've got a mediation coming up on a slaker here in the beginning part of May. So that is involving ongoing litigation. It's a requirement that we pursue mediation and trying to get to a resolution without, you know, having to pursue this all the way through court. So that'll be moving forward May fourth. And then subsequently, we've seen provided notice terminating Fisher grading and navigating through that with, with Fisher's termination notice and with bond counsel for the surety. West Bend on making sure that we are made whole for any remaining work that still needs to be done and paid out, you know, pursuant to Fisher's remaining balance on the contract. So those pieces still continue to move forward and we're working through those. Other than that, I don't have any other thing to report at this time.
All right, that moves us to fourteen, C clerk.
I don't have a lot. It's been active in our office trying to get fiscal year wrapped up, rolled over to the new one. I've had accomplished and been in limited contact, touch base with waves keeper on the audit. Pretty shortly, we'll be hearing from them, the start, information for the audit.
Number fifteen has their rise, is their rise.
I don't know if this has came up and we don't even, what's going on with the nutrition? It's for the max replacement. Any good news or?
I have not received any applications yet.
We, we, they've been out for a week or so?
About a week.
It's not, it's not hearing response. We have a two.
It's not a good sign or a bad sign. It's just kinda hopefully in a month or two, we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am meeting with Mark Mustang and another gentleman tomorrow that had the M Q A program. So I'm gonna be asking some questions on what kind of services they can offer us if, you know, a worse scenario happened.
It's a big role, tough role to fill.
Basically what Mark told me was that the market is saturated with electric apprentices right now. But as saturated as it is with apprentices, they have no journeyman out there because there's a lot of the big projects going on broadband and lots of federal dollars coming in. So they're snatching up journeymen and have high wages, high per diem rates. So it's, it's gonna be a pride, tough for us to hire a journeyman right now.
Can we find somebody that's on call for us, outside contractor? When did we, did we do that? Is that how this works? When you start to find somebody like Labuna Electric or somebody say, hey, we got lines down.
Well, we would, so we do have the mutual aid agreement with M Q A. So we would mutual aid and help in, in an emergency situation. But as far as other stuff goes, that's what I'm gonna ask them tomorrow, what services?
And hopefully they can just bring maybe one guy in to work with our guys. It'd be cheaper with that rather than bringing a whole truck and crew and a.
Yeah, but I've gotta, I've gotta ask those questions.
Good. You'll bring back good medias once.
I will, so.
Maybe Mark will come back.
No pressure, we're counting.
Did you look at the ordinance about sleeping in the campers? We have that looking at that.
That's, I've got a note to, to look at it, yeah.
Now, can we get one started on that?
Try to be somewhere, we, we talked about that a lot. Let's try to be somewhere next month. There are two meetings that we can, have something to put forwards to.
That's the baby's mama.
That's the baby momma. If no more has may arise, I have one.
I got one.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we did have a young lady who ran for the seat. Is there any forwards that we could maybe consider her for?
Probably, I have to, I just gotta look through my list. Yeah, there's no question.
A young lady interested in getting exposed to politics and threw a name and a hat. I mean, it would be great if we could at least give her an opportunity to maybe foster that.
Thank you.
Do a turn.
Yes, I'll accept one for the turn. I got one. I said, oh, that first and second to the turn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Apparently there's a party going on because there's cookies.